Good evening, it is 5:30. We could call the February 26 regular meeting of the Amherst Board of Education to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote call, Lincoln.
Mr. Zappala?
Here.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mr. Emelzna, here this evening, and Dr. Messer, present, and Mrs. Wackel, present.
Recommendations to adopt the agenda as presented, including any addendums?
So move in second.
Motion second, discussions, call the vote, Lincoln.
Uh, Mrs. Gillis?
I'm.
Mrs. Wackel?
I'm.
Dr. Messer?
I'm.
Mr. Zappala?
Hi. Good news report, Mr. Gibson, you are up.
Alright, thank you, thank you for having us. This evening we have two groups that we want to recognize, some of them are part of both groups. But first we'll call up the, uh, the eighth grade Southwest Conference co-champions from this, this year's best football season. Coach Lumper, boys, you want to come on up? The, the eighth graders, like I said, had a really awesome season, uh, did incredibly well. Our numbers at the junior high are growing. In the seventh grade, we actually split the team halfway through the season and had two different teams. And next year, we're anticipating four teams, which would put us in like the top half of the conference in number of athletes participating in football next year. And as you've seen throughout, uh, the history of our conference, numbers in football especially, really equate to success on the field, competition, more bodies, less, less people play in both ways. So we're really excited about the work that, that, um, that we're doing to raise those numbers. But a lot of that starts with being successful and Coach Lumper, who's been a major part of our success here at the junior high, so do you want to go ahead?
No, I've had the privilege of coaching these kids the last two years, getting to know them, watching them grow as athletes, and it's been a real honor. Um, actually, right now, there's ten kids in the gym who are playing basketball right now, who are on our team, numerous wrestlers, and football is just a catalyst of getting these kids involved in other activities. And that's what we want as a district, to have these kids have opportunities to compete and grow as individuals and athletes. So I'm really fortunate to be in this position and very thankful of everything that the Amherst Schools has done for our team, thank you.
Coach, we have the, the students mind, uh, athletes mind, sharing with their name, like what positions you play, and I'd love to hear that. Well, Kevin, we'll start with you, it just worked out a lot.
Um, Kevin, record, I play center. Uh, Alejandro Vera, I play linebacker and running back.
Uh, Christian Rubus, I play corner and wide receiver.
Nolan Gameboy, I just play linebacker.
Ethan, let's hear your words, Zachal, definitely Zachal.
Uh, Paul Mulcahy, I watch my.
Coach, can you share a little bit about that, uh, season real quick? Like what was the record? Who were your conference champs with?
Uh, well, we were conference champs with Avon. You know what, that was the first game of the year, and we grew a lot as the season went on. We ended up winning eight games, just lost that one, and it was a fantastic winning streak. And, you know, I just hope these guys continue to put in the work in the next few years.
Triple, one more second, maybe, does anyone want to share, was there a favorite moment of the season that, for you personally, that you did something that you wanted to share that was really cool? Or maybe a specific game that was a cool win, or you want to have anything to share?
How about that last game, guys, what do you think about, uh, that one? No, Ethan, you're a talk, come on, Kevin, you're a talk.
I was gonna say, these guys don't stop, they don't stop talking at school.
Right.
Uh, Elyria?
Yeah.
When I got on the air, that was pretty fun.
That was, that was a hard fought game, for sure.
Was it, uh, was it Avon, you had a late interception for pick six, the other Avon team? Who, who did you have?
Oh, yeah, I, I guess, uh, the Avon goal team.
Yeah.
They pick six, pull ahead, and, uh, you know, from there, just, uh, they might have just kept building.
Yeah, yeah.
Eight wins in a row, pretty impressive.
Nice, nice job.
Yeah, good job, guys.
Congratulations.
Alright, thank you, thanks, guys.
And then next up, uh, the other group we wanted to recognize is our gamers club. We think our gamers club is really cool and unique, uh, Ms. Trudicoff and I talk about this a lot. The importance to roll the gamer, that clubs, specifically like gamers clubs, and give kids who maybe don't fit into athletics or don't excel academically, there's still a place for them. And I think it's really important in the middle school to have a lot of different clubs. Uh, right now, we don't have a ton of them, but we do have, we do have a number of them that offer kids different outlets and different ways to kind of socialize, meet new kids, be, feel like a participant in the school. And Mrs. Kirshner is, uh, runs our gamers club, and she, it's really unique because, correct me if I'm wrong, okay?
Okay.
She used to own a game store.
Yes.
Right, but it's not like Monopoly, Connect Four, things like that. So when she first came to me, she's like, I want to run this gamers club, like board games. I'm like, yeah, right, like, uh, I love chess.
Chess and checkers.
Chess, I love Yahtzee, I love, like, what else can we play? She's like, no, no, none of those games. And I was like, wait, so what do you mean, there's other games? Like, there's other games? And so she's got a couple of them here.
There we go, yeah.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, um, yeah, these are, these are board games. Most of us grew up with Milton Bradley and Parker Brothers. And you, you know, take your turn, and then you go get a snack, go to the back room, see what someone's watching on the TV, you come back, it's finally your turn again, but, oh, it's going to be your turn, but you have to wait for the other person who goes before you to get back from whatever errand they were doing. I mean, they're just boring. And, and I, sorry if we have any fans here, can't stand Monopoly. I think that is the worst game ever. There's no, there's no end to it. It's this very, very vague game. So anyway, I show, and, and everybody will agree, you haven't played this yet, Emmy Parker. The, I asked a couple other, there was, um, Gal Maria that came, and last year, and now her younger brother's a sixth grader, so he's here all the time. They will tell you, this is the best game in the world, and it's the best game ever. If you have not played Cadan, um, this is actually selling its highest Monopoly, if not more so, when you look at worldwide, more people know this game. So this just was created in eighty-five. And the thing is, in Europe, they have a completely different, what we say, game mechanic. You aren't rolling the dice and waiting for everything to go around the board. You're, um, actually involved in every turn. So the dice are rolled, they affect what happens to your pieces as well as the person who rolled the dice, and then you're busy trading with each other. Did you play Bonanza yet, Parker? You weren't here for, oh, that's right. But Parker's a great example, I'm just gonna put him on the spot for one quick thing. Cause he came in, Mrs. Kirshner, he heard gamers club, he said, you know, what kind of games do you play here? I was like, we don't play electronic games. Oh, never mind, and he walked out, and about half an hour later, he had to be here for sports or something, and, and walked back in and jumped right into the game they were playing because you didn't know. What would you tell me? Why'd you decide to join game club?
Uh, I didn't know it could be that fun.
There's that, but what do you play?
Uh, Dungeons and Dragons.
Dungeons and Dragons, and so all of these games, and again, in our age, I know when I grew up in the eighties, and Dungeons and Dragons was becoming a thing, there was a whole big thing about, oh, it's a devil's game, and it's bad, all of that. But the point is, is these kids right now, as everybody says, they're busy playing on computers all the time, they're isolated, sure, they talk online, but some of that language doesn't seem like they really understand they're talking to other people. And how do you have conversations? Well, you put a game in the middle that's keeping them all involved, keeping them distracted, uh, they're doing trading, and before you know it, we've had a lot of trouble finishing this game because they're having conversations about so many other things. And they're not bored waiting for their turn because they're getting to do something every turn, but they're also learning all of those conversation skills. And I think the most important skill, my husband and I learned this early on, um, one of the biggest game conferences in the U.S. is right here in Columbus in, uh, May-June, and that is Origins, and that's the Game Manufacturers Association. And they, we, we took our kids when they were itty-bitty, and there is not a friendlier group of people than when you bring a child, and you know how it goes in restaurants. I don't want to be sitting next to the table with the kids. They are, everybody is inviting because they know it's really about everybody having fun at the game. It's not always about who wins and who loses, it's about the good sportsmanship and learning and just making sure everybody's feeling welcome and having a good time. I also talked with Mrs. Galloway, who's, um, at the resource room here in our building, and both last year and this year, I've had several of her kids show up, and they win or, you know, play second or third and get to participate along with everybody else. So they're feeling welcome, and like I said, the Dungeons and Dragons is, is being run by Maria Gargis right now, who, last year, I just had my husband come in, he spent just three weeks here, and took them through just a little example adventure because they were curious about it. She's picking it up now, and it's just, it's reading books, it's calculating, it's all paper and pencil, there's no electronics, um, although online now they can do some characters, but it's still, it's rolling the dice. She's created a story, she's guiding everybody through it, she's making sure everybody's having fun. And, um, and so they're having fun, and that's, I said, that's what attracted Parker when he first came in. And, and he's having a lot of fun too. And if you are curious to know how any of these games are played, I picked these five because these are the ones that my students have loved, 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 and like they're the ones that are fodder we'll get to play with. But I have all of these games, and my husband and I run a game club here at Amherst Library on a second Tuesday every month. So that would be March fourteen? One, two, three, four, March fourth? Yeah, but anyway, it's, it's at the Amherst Library, the twelfth?
Yep.
The twelfth. So come at, uh, what is it? Yeah, five thirty, six o'clock, it's walk in. I've got three bags, so this is maybe one-tenth of the games I own, and there's not Monopoly, and there's not checkers, but, uh, yeah, come on, and, and we'll teach, that's for families too, uh, and, uh, it's not just adults who play, just not kids coming along, they can come here. And I'll talk with them.
How often does the gamers club meet?
The gamers club, it meets every Tuesday, except for staff meeting Tuesday, so three times a month, generally speaking, and obviously not in the snow days we have here.
Right, yeah.
But, uh, otherwise, so, and everybody's really pleased with that, so thank you. But, yeah.
Mrs. Kirshner does that?
So they meet weekly, and then, yeah.
And she does that without a snipin', she does that without anything, she just does that as, as, as another avenue for kids to, to have a place to belong and have a place to do things, which I think is really cool.
Very nice, amazing. It's fun, it's, it's fun, it's great fun. And like I said, so I've been doing this for ten, fifteen years? No, twenty years. So, I'm pretty good at that, so. I'll, I'll be happy to teach you, you'll have fun if you want to come anytime, also. So there we go. Thank you. Thank you.
So that's it for us at the junior high. Uh, Ms. Trudicoff and I totally really appreciate you guys coming out and having your meeting here tonight, and allowing us to highlight, you know, some of the fun things that we have going on here. As always, if you have any questions or concerns on this day, to reach out, and we're always happy to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for coming, thank you.
Okay, may I guess we're gonna relate to you?
Sounds good. Here. Thank you. Uh, so this evening, um, I'm going to do something a little bit different. You're used to seeing this months-to-date current year versus two years prior, and the fiscal year-to-date current year versus two years prior. Um, and of course, I always show you in green, highlighted in green, what is a favorable variance, so either more revenue than the prior year or less expenditure than the prior year. Just a couple things to point out, along the bottom, you each have a copy of your desk. The Fair School Funding Plan, um, has been, um, kind to Amherst. We didn't know until October, November, what the Fair School Funding Plan was going to be. It had been neutral for two years prior, and then when they updated the inputs to fiscal twenty-two inputs, basically fiscal twenty-two costs, um, then the funding became a positive, um, source for us. Um, you look on the, the right-hand side, um, under fiscal twenty-four fiscal year-to-date, January twenty-four, all revenue categories, we've received more at the end of January than what we received at the end of January of twenty-twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-three, pardon me. Still being used to, uh, twenty-twenty-four, right? Um, in the lower right-hand corner, um, you'll see, what you don't see is any green highlights. So that means that every expenditure category, we have spent more in fiscal twenty-four than we did in fiscal twenty-five as of the end of January. But over on the right side, here's a little snapshot for you, and this is what I never provide. But we are seven months into the fiscal year, right? So, um, we should have about fifty-eight percent of our expenditures completed and about fifty-eight percent of our revenues collected for the year. What we find is, in the real estate category, which is the first line, we've collected forty-seven percent, in the public utilities, uh, we've collected fifty percent, in foundation revenue, we've collected fifty-eight percent, in restricted foundation revenues, we've collected fifty-eight percent, so we're right on target in those two areas. Property allocation, those are the reimbursements for homestead rollback that we receive from the state. Um, we are at fifty percent, right on target, because we'll have settlement here, we'll talk about that in a minute. We'll have settlement of the first half of twenty-twenty-three, state collections here within the next couple of weeks. And then, um, in other revenues, which would include, um, fee collections, pay-to-participate, um, interest revenue, investment earnings, um, we've collected sixty-one percent of what's been budgeted, so we could expect really to receive more in the miscellaneous or other categories than what we received last year, right? And then in the, um, other financing category, the last line of revenue, that's refunds of prior year expenditures, it is, um, property, or, um, if we, if we had an insurance claim that we received monies for, it would go in that line. Also, um, returns of advances and transfers is in that line. So we are only at seven percent collections for the year in the final revenue category. For expenditures, we've spent fifty-six percent of the salary budget, sixty percent of the benefits budget, I'll talk about that in a minute. Purchase services, we've spent almost half. Materials and supplies, ninety-seven percent, we'll talk about that in a minute. Capital, we spent one hundred percent of what was originally forecast. Other, which is miscellaneous expenditures like bank fees and things like that, we spent fifty-three percent in other financing, three hundred percent. Now that other financing category are advances out and transfers out to other funds. Only the federal grants, um, do we have advances out in that category. So for, um, materials and supplies, that is in the area that's been hit with inflation quite a bit. Um, we were just talking about this a little while ago. Um, so any of our custodial supplies, any of our supplies, um, and repair parts for transportation, those areas have had, you know, really high inflationary hits. Um, and then the other category, um, there's really nothing that distinct about that category, but capital and materials and supplies, we see that we, we spent all, or nearly all of what was in the November forecast. Um, does anybody have any questions about this? So, uh, this is definitely a new and different thing, kind of a by-the-numbers for the treasurer's office. We have by staff. Six hundred and ninety-one W-2s for twenty-twenty-three were generated. Six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two so far, payroll checks and direct deposits have been generated. Fourteen point two in payroll expenditures, five hundred and sixty-seven purchase orders so far. Again, we're only seven twelfths of the way through the fiscal year, so, um, we've cut fourteen hundred and forty-seven AP checks or ACH payments, six hundred and thirty-seven salary notices, um, we had, uh, three hundred and thirty recalculations and retropays, where you physically recalc and create a retropay for, for staff. That was due to the mid-year negotiations, um, mid-year contract resolution. And then finally, this would, um, jump us out to the prior page, we've spent twenty-five million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars of our expenditures so far this year. And, um, I want Mr. Mullinar to jump in, um, right now. You all, the board, are not privy to a lot of the background, um, pieces, tasks, responsibilities that are involved in the capital project. Here, I've kind of given you a timeline of the behind-the-scenes tasks for the debt issuance for the capital upgrades that we will be, um, embarking on here shortly. Um, so, this is kind of hard to see, so I'm gonna cheat. The first of March here, this, at the end of this week, we'll have a, a near final preliminary offering circular for the COPS issuance. Um, we also have, um, Mike meeting with the attorney, the architect engineers, um, to develop the, um, final RFQ, and that's a request for qualifications for construction managers for the upcoming capital upgrades. So there's a lot of, a lot of meetings, lots of emails going back with RFQ versions and things like that. It's tedious work, things that the board isn't, um, doesn't very often see. Um, and then next, um, board meeting, March eighteenth, we expect the board to pass an authorizing resolution for the COPS, um, which is the debt issuance. And just to refresh everybody, COPS is certificates of participation, it's a different kind of debt instrument, but similar to bonds, okay? Um, and then the first week of, um, April, by the first week of April, we expect a near final offering circular to be sent to Moody's Investors Service. Um, we will be preparing for a rating presentation at that time, and also preparing for the construction manager risk selection at that point. Um, by the middle of April, we expect to receive a rating, a bond rating, from, um, Moody's Investors Service. And just to refresh your memory, the bond rating is very much like, um, a person's own credit rating, you know, seven fifty, eight fifty, maybe even higher, et cetera, et cetera. And then that, by the middle of April, we expect the offering circular, which is very similar to a prospectus out in, out in the business world, a prospectus tells investors whether they want or don't want to invest in a particular entity or whatever. So we want to put our best foot forward and make sure that everything in that offering circular says that, uh, people want to invest in the debt that we're issuing. Um, and then, uh, as that offering circular goes out to the investors, um, the title work will be completed, that's completed by bond counsel. Title work needs to be completed as part of the lease part of the certificate of participation, um, documentation. By the third week of April, we will price and, um, set interest rates, that's the underwriter and the municipal advisor. And then, um, several weeks later, typically a three-week, um, closing period, we'll close the twenty-twenty-four series of the certificates of participation and receive settlement of the, um, the debt issuance proceeds into our account. And then we'll have cash. Um, and I, I did not include there that, um, mid-April, mid-May, you'll be approving appropriation so that we can begin encumbering purchase orders for the construction manager risk contracts and building permits and all those things. Certainly there's something you'd like to add there, Michael?
Well, you did a phenomenal job. And so what I was gonna say is, uh, we have a great financial team, be honest, and we put together, and Amy's put together, and we meet with them just every, every two weeks, every week, it seems like, uh, and so right now, as we meet with them, they're constantly looking at the environment, what, what interest rates might be, what, you know, what the debt might look like. Um, and right now, what they are saying is that right now, you know, there was, you know, there's a debate about how quickly you have to go to debt. Obviously, if interest rates are gonna go up, it's gonna, we're not gonna maybe bring as much money, it's gonna cost us more for, for debt than we want to, you know, get the COPS issue done right away. They're saying that right now, um, everything is stable and looks forward through, you know, the next couple of months marginally to be stable, and if not where we're at right now, we'd be even more favorable, maybe interest rates might drop a little bit. So, um, they, they advise us, you know, there's no rush to get this done, this is the timeline that actually Amy worked with, uh, some of the venture team to kind of readjust, and this is the most updated version from last week we met. Um, and then, do you want to just mention who is on the team, real quick?
Yes.
I think that'd be cool.
To refresh everyone's memory, um, Mr. Mullinar is the superintendent of schools, I'm the treasurer, I'm on the team. Um, we have Mike Sharp from Squires, um, Pat and Bob in downtown Cleveland as the bond counsel. We have Michelle Hillstrom from Stiefel Kniglows, um, they are the investment bankers, otherwise known as the underwriters. Um, I can go into further detail if you want to know what an underwriter is, but we'll do cursory for right now. And then we have, um, David Conley, whom you all know from Rockwell Financial Consulting, as municipal advisor. Uh, I don't think that we're forgetting anybody. There is a team from Stiefel that, um, from the underwriters, um, and like Mike said, we meet about every two or three weeks just to make sure that we're on schedule. Um, I did send a week and a half ago now, um, the offering circular, all of the data that I needed to collect for the school district, now they're compiling that which they received from the county and et cetera. Um, so it is a, it is a lengthy process, most of it's not, um, really, um, it's, it's interesting to me, but it's not something that looks really interesting to the outside. These are just, you know, the little process and pieces and steps and tasks that we do internally before we, uh, we price the issue. Now, what Mike said a couple minutes ago was that, um, interest rates, um, are steady and maybe even coming down somewhat, they've come down somewhat since, um, December, the last few months. And, um, our valuation, our assessed valuation for the district is part of the equation, and as interest rates go down, our valuation won't change because it's set for twenty-twenty-four, right, twenty-twenty-three, et cetera. But as interest rates go down, it opens up more debt issuance, right? We, we can get more with a lower interest rate as far as monies proceeds for the projects themselves. So that's why we, we're keeping an eye on the market, and that's why our underwriter and municipal advisor are keeping an eye on it as well. Anybody have any questions?
Are we able to get a?
Yeah, just send that to us, please.
Yes, I can.
Sure. I was gonna take a picture, but I was like, you just sent it. It would be a better picture. Yeah. Right, yeah, I will definitely do that. Anybody have, any other, you have questions?
Can we go back to number one, March first? Can you tell me the RFQ, can you explain that a little?
I'm actually going to have Michael talk about the RFQ.
So the RFQ, we're having a lawyer draft that up, and that is a request for qualification. So we're gonna put out to the public a request for qualifications for construction manager at risk. Um, in the past, we did Powers Elementary School, Icon, if you remember, that team was on construction manager at risk, really, like, kind of, like, the general manager controls everything and is every, does everything on our behalf, right? And so we're going to put the, that request out for qualifications, and, and we will, people will submit those to us. We've, uh, up to this point, had many, uh, different companies contact us, including some we've worked with in the past, so they mostly reach out to Amy and say, hey, where are we at? So they're, they're, we're having interest, and people are, are interested in being part of our project, and so, so that's, we'll hopefully get out very soon.
I'm wondering, what kind of qualifications are we actually looking for? I mean, what, is it, I know it's a construction manager, right?
Right, right.
So is it, is it their resume that we're looking at?
There's actually, um, so GPD Group, our architect firm, they'll be a part of the process, kind of running the process, there actually is an entire document with, um, all kinds of different pieces, parts, statements, uh, that they'll actually be rated on, they'll get scores on and rated on. Um, I have not seen that document, but it's what we've done in the past, and, um, so there's, yeah, they put out a whole presentation, and then all of the, they score basically from all parts of that rating scale.
That entire RFQ process is also very prescriptive, it'll have revised code, of course, it's involved with the RFQ process as well. Um, and then even throughout that process, there's an opportunity for prospective construction managers at risk to come in and meet, it's like, uh, the last week before the qualifications are due, they can come in and ask any questions and et cetera. Um, so it is a very descriptive process, it's generally known as the lowest responsible bidder, but if you don't always select the lowest responsible, but the lowest bidder in that process, there's the caveat of the responsibility. So when the construction managers at risk are applying, um, they're also bringing us a portfolio of their projects. So it, it is a lot of their resume to answer that question.
And one quick example, if you allow me, I'm talking to Aaron Bodab from GPD, for example. He's going through that process within the district right now. And so they had their presentations, everyone came in. And so, you know, for example, one of the CMRs put a, pulls up, this will take about twelve months, which is, I think, what they put out for the project, twelve months. And this is the cost for those twelve months for us to manage the project, et cetera. Well, another group came in and said it's gonna cost, we think it'll be about fourteen months. And so, here's what the cost is gonna be, it was fourteen months. One said we need one person on site. The other group said we have two people on site, which is more than the cost. So there's other things you're weighing there, when they bring proposals in, what they think they can do, what they should provide, which again determines costs and what they can do. So, in that situation, they felt like the project did not need two people. And also, if the project had done twelve months versus fourteen months, there was some discrepancy of, how does that extra month get paid? Is it, well, we'll renegotiate that later. So, there was information they gathered, began to make the best decision. Might not be just the lowest bidder, you know what I mean? So there's different things that we'll discuss with that when they propose to us.
So, so this person or group, they are doing the, the transportation building, and they're also going to do the safety upgrades and stating?
We went back and forth on that, whether we would do two RFQs for two separate ones, or one for all. We discussed with Mark, the president, a little bit. But the recommendation from GPD was do one for both.
Do one.
Do one, yeah, do one for both, so they're umbrella. And one of the biggest reasons, I think, that they made the recommendation is because, you know, again, finance, this is a kind of all one package. So for someone who's overseeing both or all the projects, understand, here's where we're going to, you know, reduce costs for something here, but oh, we need a little more over here for this change order, whatever. So it makes sense to have someone who's overseeing both. Both will be done in the same timeframe, by hopefully August twenty twenty-five, both will open. So that also was another factor, they were different timeframes, that might not make sense, because you'd be paying for maybe a wider gap of months over both projects.
Okay, I guess I didn't, I didn't realize that either, though. I didn't realize that they would both be done at the same time.
That's, that's the aim in SARS' schedule right now. Like, that, that always changes with construction and materials and things like that.
You know, the, the project itself is going to be parsed out in different stages because you can't do all of the athletic upgrades at the same time. So for instance, the tennis courts would probably, probably, probably be done.
Quite possibly.
Before anything, quite possibly, probably. Right, I think, perhaps.
Jump ahead.
No, I get what you're saying. Right, and then, and then as I give definition, I, I wanted to share what CMR stands for. It's Construction Manager at Risk. It is a particular delivery method of a construction project. In the past, construction manager of agency used to be the main, the main way to deliver a project. But there's also design-build. Well, what Construction Manager at Risk does for us, CMR for short, is that we have one contract with the architect engineer, GPD, which we already have, we've already approved that contract. And then we have a contract with the Construction Manager at Risk. And what that does is, the board first, after the Construction Manager at Risk selection, the first agreement that the board approves is an agreement with the CMR. And then, as we move towards schematic design, design documents, a little bit further into the design process, and a price then is generated, a GMP. I think Mark and Teresa would be familiar with that term, GMP. It stands for Guaranteed Maximum Price. So, then in the process, is the Construction Manager at Risk assumes the risk. It's not the district, so there's a guaranteed maximum price. They hire all of the subcontractors. They might self-perform a lot of the work, they might hire subcontractors. And then, they issue contracts to those subcontractors. So we're really only paying an architect engineer and a construction manager at risk.
Gotcha.
And real quick, the only other reason we would consider, I think, separate CMRs for projects because they're very different. One's a pre-engineered building, which again, a lot of CMRs would understand that. Athletics is a little more specialized, you know. But in the discussion and talking through a little bit, you know, when you think about athletics, when it comes to the final surfaces, whether it be the track surface, the actual surface of the tennis court, et cetera, you know, that's the, that's like the final piece. Most of the work is really foundational, structural, like same cement you're pouring for the tennis court, you might be pouring for the transportation building.
Right.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So.
That makes sense.
Well, a lot of the, athletics stuff is specialized. You know, a lot of the work really is very similar to other construction, you know.
Mm-hmm.
That was my next one, that was my next question.
So we will send this slide to you guys. Thanks. I'm gonna move on to recommendations, if that's okay, Mr. President.
Sure, thank you.
Pretty straightforward this evening. It's items that you see on a regular basis. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting from January twenty-second. Acknowledge the January twenty twenty-four financials. To refresh your memory, there is a cash reconciliation. It lists all of the different cash flow funds that we have in the district. Any entrants, outstanding checks. The next thing is a financial summary by fund and special cost center that lists each fund and special cost center, the beginning cash balance, year-to-date revenues, year-to-date expenditures, et cetera. And then there is a month-end forecast report. And that is for general fund and the emergency levy zero sixteen fund. And then finally, there's the accounts payable, paper check and ACH report. Those are exhibits eight A through eight D. Appropriations changes is on exhibit eight E. And in short, it's the high school principals fund and appropriation increase to spend a new grant. The oh nineteen E-rate fund, that is a new appropriation for this year for E-rate reimbursement. We are receiving a hundred and nine thousand dollars in reimbursement for one of the safety security projects that we performed last summer. And then, just to remind you, E-rate is a federal, a federal program. So the reimbursement's coming from USAC. I'm not sure what that acronym stands for right this minute. The recreation fund, the oh thirty fund, we're increasing that appropriation by seventeen thousand dollars for the purchase of a softball and baseball field grooming machine. It's a thirty-four thousand dollar piece of equipment. Plus, we're sharing it between the, the general fund and the recreation levy fund. And then finally, the five fifty-one account, which is the Title III English Learners Fund. And we are decreasing that appropriation to thirty-six hundred fifty-one dollars and change. And that's just to reconcile the grant allocation. We are a sub-recipient through the educational service center for that. And then, approve the advance of funds, hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and change from the general fund to our S R, S R three. It's the final round of the S R funds. And then finally, there was quite a list of donations for the board to acknowledge. That is it.
I will make motion. So through eight A then eight E, again.
Circle.
I have a question.
Okay.
So the machine that we're buying for the baseball field and the soccer field, are we sharing that with anybody, or is that just ours?
We are. We're, no, we'll be the ones using that machine. Only our staff, yeah.
Okay.
Our rec funds.
But we did use some of the rec funds from rec legging to help.
So.
To, yeah, to help, to help support the split between the district.
But we're the only ones going to run the machine?
Yes, yes.
Our buildings and, and personnel, yes, they're our only ones. Okay.
They're the only ones getting trained, I also.
Oh, good, thanks.
Who, now who would be running that? Are specifically, any, anybody here, or?
Just.
Sure, there's people. Probably just our four to five land, landscapingers outside, browsing, it's like, yeah, the landscaping crew.
And the vendors coming in to provide the training on the new ones.
Any other comments or questions?
What's prevention first? I just wanted to know. I guess I could Google that, but.
That's the last donation.
Oh, sorry, yeah, the last bullet.
That is the five thousand dollar donation that Mrs. Kim Haney obtained.
Oh, yeah, for SLS.
Right.
Yeah.
And that is the five thousand that you just saw in the appropriations increase for the oh eighteen fund at high school.
Anything else? Okay, you can call, roll, please.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Dr. uh, Mrs. Wapples.
I got an upgrade.
Dr. Masters.
Hi. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zaba.
Hi.
Thank you.
Mr. Molnar, Superintendent's Report.
First thing I want to share is, I had an opportunity last night to disperse in Lorraine County Alliance of Black School Educators. They had hosted a ceremony for all Lorraine County students. So there were, you know, straight A's, honor roll, high honor. There were five hundred seventy-two, I think, students invited to the program. Not only attendance, it was a Sunday afternoon, but it was an LCC, beautiful ceremony, it was awesome. About two hours long, Dr. Messer was there. Her son was recognized as well. Actually, Tia Ford also was there, her children were recognized as well. So just, it's just a beautiful program. It was awesome seeing everyone there. Students received certificates and wrote nice plaques. And it was, yeah, the first time I was invited was the fortieth anniversary. So it was just, it was an awesome program. So I look forward to going back every single year. So that's the first. The second thing I wanted to real quickly highlight is, last month we had public, person, speaking publicly about transportation, just questioning about the safety of like our dismissal procedures and so on. And normally, when someone comes to the board, or maybe, or calls a board member and asks to look into something, you know, that's usually board superintendent, we, we take it from there. And normally, we don't really, we don't really have a response publicly, or giving some of this information back to you. We kind of take care of it. But I thought this was important to kind of share an update real quick, just so you all understand what goes into, you know, how much we do value people's perspectives and when they come to share with us different kind of concerns and thoughts. So when that fact comes in, so after that person spoke and had questions about transportation, so I actually had a meeting with Police Chief Mark Kothon, General School Resource Officer, three days later. So we had a meeting to discuss the kind of concerns. We also then reviewed the rival dismissal procedures. In that meeting, we decided, hey, why don't we collect the drone footage of dismissal? Get the kind of bird's eye view, see what's happening, see about this kind of safety concerns as well. And we actually decided that we were gonna take that drone footage and not, you know, I, I didn't know what day it was, Mr. Gibson didn't know what day it was, we're taking it to junior high. So it's kind of like a surprise drone footage collection. After that, we got the drone footage, then I met with transportation supervisor, the Hope's president, human resources director, and staff member involved. We reviewed that on February fifteen. And then again, just so you're not aware, the final kind of, I guess, looking into the issue, AJH dismissal from Police Chief Kothon is safe. There were no recommendations of yearly for any kind of change. But that doesn't mean we won't continue to meet and talk and review and see how we can make things better than at all times. So again, just want to share that with you because, again, I want to make sure the public knows, all of you know, everyone knows. Everything that comes to me takes very seriously. And we take time and effort into researching things and trying to figure things out. So real quick, what I do want to do, I actually want to show you the drone footage, so you can take a look real quick. So, everything, I'll wait for a second. Just so I can point out, I guess, the concern, but what am I doing? So here, real quick is the drone footage that we have playing. We'll, I'll kind of fast forward through it, actually. But you can see here, AJH buses are arriving. Now, some of the concern was with where some parents are parking, which is not the designated spot. Some parents are parking here and also down by the other parking lot, the entrance. We talked with Police Chief Kothon, it's a resource officer. Again, these are legal parking spaces. There's nothing illegal for parking there. We, we don't want parents to park there, pick students up, but they are, and that's legal. There's, there's nothing we can do.
But if someone's on the opposite side.
Okay, so the opposite side. So the, this area was built to also be a parking spot for events and other things. So even though we don't have it lined, maybe that's something we need to look into, that's also okay. This area is, one of the issues you'll see is, is this area where is not for parking, no one does park there. But Powers parents come an hour or more for their dismissal, and the entryway is right here. So what you will see is a few Powers parents come and park. They're not kind of lined up, they're not parking, but they're in line to get in here. Again, Police Chief said, that's not, that's not illegal or anything wrong. Like, they come in here, and they're waiting in line to get in here, yes.
So those people that are parked over here in the lower lot, those are.
Here.
That's where the AJ, that's where AJH parents are supposed to park.
This is where AJH parents, yes, yes.
Okay, I got you.
And so our procedure will fit, our procedure has been, we release all bus riders first, with the goal of getting all the buses out of the way. Then we release walkers and car riders to their parking.
I have another question.
Yes, Donna, here's.
Me too.
But also, but also.
Out there.
Yes.
I, I have a question, because I know that those are legal parking spots, I understand that. But that's not where people are supposed to be coming in. They're supposed to be coming in the other way. So I guess my question is, why aren't we stopping those people from coming in and parking? I, I understand their parking spot, but that's not the way that we're supposed to dismiss.
Right, right. Because parents don't follow the rules.
We're not.
And so, again, in order to, you know, when we put up information to happen, follow directives and rules, we can maybe get them to listen for a couple of days or so on, or maybe cut this down in half. But again, over time, it just builds back up again. And, and so.
We can't have somebody standing down there, or that's just too much time?
Well, well, it would require fifteen or more staff members all along here to, well, no, let me explain. We require fifteen more staff members to, yes. So we'd have to have fifteen staff members, which we don't have, out here possibly to try to.
Sarah, what are you doing? Am I doing it?
She can't.
I'm just, I'm kidding. You know what, I can put that in my calendar really easily. I'm kidding. It's not supposed to be a role of coaching team.
So, just like, just like you imagine for any sporting event, athletic, anything we do, like, when, when someone decides not to play, it's follow the rules. Like, we do as much as we can to kind of direct them.
Uh-huh.
But again, to try to prevent that with staff manpower, the time it will take, we just don't have that available. Now, and, and if we were to, like, we were to try to cone it off or something, parents would just move the cones apart there.
No, I was, what I, what I was thinking is, why, I understand that people come early, but I guess my question is, we don't need fifteen people. Why can't we just have somebody down on my lane, and they can't turn in, and just not lie? That's my point, I guess.
And then everyone's the only person that wants to come to the school, I'm just thinking that my student, and they won't say, I'm picking them up in the office because they're sick or something.
Well, they don't need, it, it doesn't matter, they gotta go the other way.
But you can't stop somebody if they're coming to pick up their student who's like sick.
Both cars.
Well, you can, maybe the other car picks up there.
That, that doesn't present any kind of restriction.
Number one, for those buses getting out of there. And two, shouldn't there be a safety issue?
No, we'll, we'll watch right now. Yeah, we'll watch right now. So, um, so, okay, so you see the students are starting to be released. And I'll just kind of fast forward through this. As, as all students are released, the buses first.
Well, see, you already have a car up there, on the park. Oh, so they're still coming in.
That's getting them.
So if you were to fast forward and watch all this, you would, there are, when I watch this, there were a hundred students going to buses, there were three students that snuck down to a car somewhere. Which, again, you can't prevent that from happening.
Oh, yeah.
But.
So are these people that are coming all the way up, are they part of the way to get a kid?
Again.
Some of them also are parking there.
This all happened, this all, right, this all happened in seven minutes, right? So, these are the Powers parents who are coming to get in line.
Oh.
And so they came in right here.
Is that okay?
And that's parking.
Yes, the police, the, because they're, they're, I know, I know, I know it's parked.
That's parking.
Cars are running.
But cars are running.
That's parking.
And the Police Chief said that is, I mean, they're waiting in line to get in.
Those people in the, that are waiting early are in the correct direction. They are.
Which, these?
Yeah, the ones right there, they're waiting to come in properly where they're supposed to go. They're just early, they're just early.
Yeah, they're just coming for Powers, an hour.
You put everybody that's over in the left, and all those cars are getting parked, so they're waiting to be right.
Well, this is what I'm saying.
You don't get your.
Even though the chief said that it's okay and legal. But, exactly, these are our rules as relates to the, the civil traffic pattern here. It could be legal in the eyes of the law, but it doesn't mean that it's right in what we want done.
Right, but I want you to watch, just watch the rest of it.
But you can't penalize the, like, what's our recourse to penalize?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, like, like here.
Tickets.
You look, you look, you look it over here, if you have to get multiple safety vehicles through there, you're in trouble.
Yes.
Yes, that's true.
You're in trouble.
But there, there's no fire things there.
No.
No, right.
Sun.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, that's what I'm saying. There's no way that you
So, so maybe the buses just, the bus
Because that's a car right there, that.
But again, they're coming into, I mean, it's a driveway, they're, that's their only access to come into A J H. I've 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 sometimes come in at this point also, I I'm coming back to work from I was at Steel. That that's not, it's not illegal, I'm I'm, it's not, it's not a time in my work, but there's no, there's no other option, see what I'm saying?
Well, you're giving the buses
Yeah, you're giving the buses really determined, actually.
But I think, I think a staff member is different than a person picking up their kids.
Yes, but So again, I don't have fifteen, I don't have fifteen people standing here checking every car and saying, you staff member, where are you going, where are you parking?
How you gonna, how you gonna pick staff?
I, it's just not, it's not feasible. And this, and this is, and this, and this, this is absolutely, what's a dismissal, it's absolutely
So this side, this side is legitimate parking spots.
Here?
This, yeah, up there, how about this side?
He's saying, yes, and they'll tell me.
Yeah, for the full side, grass, grass included.
Yeah, I thought before, I thought years past, we said people are not allowed to park on the grass, I thought we even had signs that
Well, there's a, there's a sign, but it's beyond where those cars are.
Yep.
So where it thins out.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I'm just gonna walk in here.
Yes, please.
So right here, about here is a sign, so you can see this is parking, it's like a picture of Kothan.
Okay.
And then there is a sign that says no parking in the grass, but it's way up there.
Yep.
Yay, boo.
And so they
Well, I'm not there too, I have the drone.
All of them, you all, you're on the way.
We saw you on the drone.
So basically, this is what it is.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean I'm not saying, I mean, our principals are inside, working with students and staff and like, I'm not gonna send them out an hour ahead of time. Or other staff members which I don't have available to
But I don't think it should be a staff member.
Yeah.
I think it should be our police officers that be hired, why can't they be out there?
Because there's a two
Okay, well, well, I can see where those, I think there should be one, um whatever, we could be talking about this forever.
Well, I would say as someone who has been a parent in this lot, there have been SROs sitting out there and it doesn't stop anyone from doing anything. They're gonna go where they wanna go and they'll watch to make sure everyone's like seeing.
Well, as Sarah said, unless you have recourse, it's pointless.
Right.
Yeah, right, I agree.
You're right, there's no T.
Well, the important thing is, is when uh Chief Kothan and the SROs and everyone reviewed this, you know, they found it to be safe and they didn't have any recommendations for change because there was, at the beginning of the year, car riders and bus riders were being dismissed at the same time, which was causing some issues, and so they refined that practice, pulled back where now the car riders and the walkers are now released after, so that hopefully the buses are loaded and pulling out before the other kids. So that's helping alleviate some of that cars pulling out in front of the buses, which we had at the beginning of the year. So what, so let me ask you, so the A J H students, you guys don't know this, the A J H students that are getting a ride in a car do not get released until all the kids in the buses are on the bus.
Kids are Yes.
You see the buses pulling out here, and now now you see the students
Oh, I see. Now you'll see the other students coming out.
Okay.
Starting to
I got it.
And they're gonna split half a block that way to all those cars and now they'll come here.
Okay.
You see the buses are coming.
And so those people that are way down there in that other parking lot, they are picking up walkers.
Yeah, so they're walkers, they're walkers.
And they're not in the park there, right?
And they just want
Yes, that's fine, yeah.
That's always been a thing.
That's fine. Again, that's not where they are supposed to wait.
Yeah.
It's also like not in the way, doesn't seem, yeah.
Well, that doesn't seem, it's not added to the conversation.
It's not added to the suggestions for those people sitting on the right. My, I would say that lot, they're allowed to park there.
Oh, he's a model.
I came from
The people parking in the Powers' lot, that's where you're supposed to wait for your A J H walker or car rider. Those people are just waiting for a walker as well, but what Mr. Gibson told them, they're walking, they're just waiting in Powers' lot.
Are they, you're saying, we did a little bit?
And they're just
I would think that these people here would have to wait a way longer time, that they would just park their Power, right?
Well, the problem, never mind. I would say, I saw the video, I thought it was, I think that's fine, and I sat in that mess. And my concern is less about the kids crossing in front of cars and buses, not that they don't do that, because they do it all the way up and down the hill as they walk. I mean, that's dangerous too. My issue is more of them walking to the Powers' lot and beyond and they're on school property, but there is no one out there watching. I've seen at least two fights almost break out, like right next to the Powers' playground. Just kids like picking on each other on their way to their car or walking or whatever. And a parent jumped out of the car and stopped it. And I was like, I mean, thank goodness, but they're still on school property and you could have been hurt or whatever, but there is like no one out there. So if we're gonna put the SRO somewhere, I would recommend it's either down at this corner where they're watching the kids like actually cross streets and stuff. Or over here by the Powers', where they like turn around, they turn right where the preschool entrance is. And once they turn around the building, like there's no one to see them. So I realize they're out of school, it's not their school hours anymore, but they're still on school property, so if something were to happen, we are
Are there hours, the SROs?
I don't, I don't know that, I can't, because they're they're taking the building, so
Right. We can do that, right? I know they're they're here on on this campus before seven in the morning.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm thinking, are they even here?
They are, they are.
They're parked, they are.
Either right in this parking lot or parked in that very first parking lot.
So they're here at seven to three thirty or something?
So, yeah, sometimes earlier, because kids start arriving and they're allowed into, they're allowed in at seven fifteen, right?
Yeah.
To A J H, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and I I will say, I'm usually here, you know, ten to seven to quarter after seven type timeframe. And as I'm driving in, I mean, there's a steady stream of parents going the way they're supposed to into that Powers' lot, making the circle, dropping their students off. And what I've really noticed is that the students are walking through the crosswalks. Instead of in other ways, they're following the crosswalks.
Mm-hmm.
That has changed. They are definitely abiding by the the crosswalk pattern, much better than anywhere before, so
That's good.
There, Mr. Gibson just said something to improve it. So you just can't police everybody and not everyone are rule followers. Take your battles, kind of thing. Just saying.
Okay, just wanna give that to you.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Oh.
Thanks.
And how you done, interesting.
I guess, I guess, Sarah.
Guess it's my turn. So on a lighter note, um I wanted to showcase for you guys some of the amazing collaborative projects we've got going on um between our buildings and in our district. Um so one of the big things that we have is Marion Mentoring started last year, this is this is year two, and the students named this Marion Mentoring. And what that is, is we have um fourteen matches of students between Steel and NORD. And every Wednesday, they go, the Steel students walk over to NORD and hang out with their littles and play games, do crafts, have activities. And then this year, we have now started it in partnership um with A J H and Powers. And this has all been the brainchild of our uh guidance counselors are all spearheading this, so Jill Coleman and Erica Stallings, along with Bob Perkula and Hannah Johnson here on this campus, Christine Diaz, Sarah Rigdon, um at Steel with Chandler Kramer and our social workers all working together to create this. It's kind of like, you remember Big Brothers, Big Sisters, it's 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 under those same veins, but it's all done internally. And so it's really been a great opportunity for um our kids, our younger kids who might be struggling in, you know, making clear relationships or or what have you, to work with some older kids and for some of our older kids to showcase their leadership skills with some of our younger kids. And so we're really excited about this project and this program and and we're looking forward to years to come with that. Um another collaborative project has been Best Buddies. Um this is year two for A J H, Hannah Johnson, when she came back um to us last year, brought this from Midview and implemented it at the Junior High. And uh Powers and Steel took it and ran with it this year. And so this is with um our some intervention specialists, along with our school counselors, working together to create these opportunities um for our um students with and without disabilities to have activities and engage in um projects and things together. So what you'll see is Steel up there in the top corner. Um they went on a visit to Target to do some Christmas shopping. Um the lower corner there in the left is the Junior High, working together to make some um gingerbread houses. And then over here, um the three pictures here on the right are our Powers' Best Buddies groups that are, um they were doing some um rhythm sticks and dancing the scarf and making some crafts, and this is all for Valentine's Day. And so with our A J H chapter is pretty well established. Powers and Steel are working to enhance their chapters, but just wanted to let you guys know, um I sent out an email to the district earlier today, we are participating in the Best Buddies Friendship Walk. Um this will be on April twenty-eighth, you're welcome to come and join us, it's it's at Cropper Park in the morning. It's a mile walk around the loop and it's just a really fun, great time. Our goal is to beat Wesley, they keep raising more money than we did, and so that's our big goal, is to um have our chapters, you know, raising as much money as we can for our local chapters as well as for the state chapter. So that's been an excellent addition. Um Rocks, Ruling Our Experiences, which are our girls groups, grades five through twelve, are up and running. Um we're hoping to hear back for some grants that we we applied for to continue funding the program. Um but there on the left is our NORD um chapters and some activities here in the center. Um and on the right with our our Junior High uh groups that are that are rolling at this time, so that's been a great addition, this is year three, I think, for Rocks here in our district. Um and then I wanted to share with you, you may have heard, we have a partnership with Good Shepherd Baptist Church. Um they supply our Amherst Schools Backpack Program. We have over a hundred kids in our district that get backpacks um every week from this program. And the kids look forward to it, they, the backpacks get delivered typically on Wednesday or Thursday, they pick them up on Friday, they have them for the weekend. They have snacks, food, just different things in them to kind of tide them over for the weekend. Um we have around thirty-five uh kids at Powers', we have about thirteen at NORD, thirty at the Junior High, and twenty-four at Steel to take advantage of this program. Um I'm not sure if you're aware, but Good Shepherd Baptist Church is looking for donations to help keep the program alive and running. Our Leo Club is doing a Dine to Donate at Ziggy's on March twelfth. Um that'll be from eleven to eleven, um where some of the proceeds for those, any food purchases on that day will go toward for Good Shepherd Baptist Church and and donating toward the backpack program. But donations can also be made directly to Good Shepherd Baptist Church. Um attention Sheri Stempowski, checks payable to Good Shepherd Baptist Church. Um I just wanna add to that two things. One, make sure if you go to Ziggy's that you have to say it's with the backpack program, if you don't, the money will not go towards that. And number two, Main Street Amherst has partnered with Good Shepherd Baptist Church, and if people wanna Venmo, they can Venmo their um donation to M S Amherst, Main Street Amherst, just M S Amherst, and then just put in the memo that it's for the backpack That's program. And then we write them a check. Okay, great. Yeah, we gave them already four hundred dollars. Awesome. So and and that it's it's a great cause, it's it builds great relationships with our our students that need the most. Um I did wanna go back and mention too, with the Best Buddies, we are in the process of, Hannah Johnson's in the process of coordinating a Dine to Donate for Best Buddies as well, um that'll be done locally, but information will be forthcoming on that. To beat Wesley, yeah, no offense Wesley, we love our demons, but we want us to beat them.
Sarah, how do you, how do you raise money for the Best Buddies other than Dine to Donate? But I mean, with the walk, how, do you have places or how does, how how do you get the money?
So we've gotten the money through, um our PTOs have helped with some of the the uh Best Buddies money um to kind of get the chapters up and rolling, but then whatever money we collect from the fundraiser from the Walker Fund, that's their big um
So you have to pay to walk, is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You you get, you um you, and you don't have to pay to walk, but you can donate for the walk.
Okay.
So it's it's how it works.
I think you're gonna say it.
They pay directly to Best Buddies.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I wanna
So if you want information on that.
Is there like a like fee to walk or how how do they, I mean
No, you you just sign up, you just sign up to say I wanna, I wanna support the cause and and you could just show up and walk?
With no money?
With no money. With no money.
Or you pay your own sponsors.
Or you can, you can, you can
No, I thought you
Join our
You're generating to beat Wesley.
Right. Right, through these 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 things.
Okay.
Our campaign.
Can you send us that QR code?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, if you have any, so. If you send me that whole purple thing, I'll share it.
Okay.
Is it on our website somewhere or something?
It will be, it just came out today, it's like fresh off the press.
I know.
All right, you brought it here first.
All right.
Thanks. And that concludes my report.
Well, I would just add to this Southern Board discussion, um Sarah just said with the backpack program. I would like personally thank each one of the board members here um for their financial donation to the cause. Uh obviously, we we just heard how how good a cause it is and what it does and how many families it it hits. So I would encourage anybody out there, that if you could, to donate, get with Sarah and or the church, um and and make that donation. But I just wanna say thank you to everybody here. And I'm, so anybody else have anything to say? Okay, let's go on to personal recommendations, you have one. Dr. Messer, you wanna mention this?
Oh, yeah, so the um War Two O One Training, I went to uh our new old speed training, Sally Brean, she uh hated us. Her twenty twenty-four president goals, so um I can email this out to everyone as well, but um these are her goals. And then the QR code, I can email the link as well, but it is to a, you know, that form, it's basically like, I guess, taking a pledge to I guess, support, you know, be an activist for supporting public education. And keep in contact with our local senator and representative, things of that nature, so that was pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Right, so, so on to personal recommendations, just wanted to thanks one, thank the Lord, I know that um last year and a half, I think our board meetings are going longer and longer, but you know what, it's because of all of your discussions and your input and participating, and it's a good thing. So I appreciate all of you for doing that every, every month. Actually, it's almost like, last year, I almost won two board meetings, especially we, so thank you.
Almost two for one, yeah.
So for personal recommendations, you had a chance to all look at those. Uh a lot of those had to do with contractual stats, status changes and things like that. So I'd like to just recommend personnel items A through eleven for a group.
So, second.
Second, any discussion? Comments? Call me, Wolf, please.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackel. Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi. Educational recommendation?
Yeah, we set a few educational recommendations that the board has had a chance to see. Um and like make recommendation for the board to approve, educational recommendations A through H.
So, I get you.
Then motion and second, any comments or questions?
I I guess I just have one comment real quick, I, thank you for the rest of the information for item C, I appreciate that.
Was your
I'm sorry?
Oh, you what?
What was the
What was the
Yeah, so the normal contract we have always has kind of basically what the school district receives as far as like our like the little payment and the bonus that you get for our school plans and it's awesome. Mark asked about next year's prices for the packages. And so I contacted Bill Ripshow and he uh got back those and actually sent an addendum with a second page listing the prices, which have not changed from last year and actually hasn't changed, I think, for a couple of years. Um he said we're we're great great group to work with and hasn't changed those in a couple of years, so we swapped that out in the drive. So it had a second page with next year's prices on it for the packages.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just take a look.
Any other questions or comments? Call the role, please.
Mrs. Gellis.
Mrs. Wackel.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi. Business recommendations, Mr. Mullins?
Yeah, we just have three there. And so I'd like to recommend business items A through C for the board.
Second, on second?
Second.
And the comments or questions? Yeah, any comments or questions? Hearing that, call me, Wolf, please.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Um, you know, can I go back?
No. Sure.
Can you just elaborate a little bit on this after-bid purchase for the buses?
Yes. I was expecting someone to ask. Um, so Ohio Schools Council is a consortium that we belong to. It's located in Independence by the E S D of Cairo County. We typically um decide in the fall and then again in the spring whether or not we're going to participate in the bus bid. If we participate in the bus bid, the board approves a very cursory resolution allowing us to join the November or May bus bid. And that's typically um, you'll see the May bus bid at the March board meeting. So that's typically the resolution would be two months ahead of time. What's different about this resolution thirteen C is that it's an after-bid bus purchase resolution. We did not participate in the November twenty twenty three bus bid. We were planning on buying buses. We had other capital endeavors that we wanted to um make sure that we did, such as the maker space and all of the equipment and all of that. So several weeks ago, five, six weeks ago, Mike and I met with all of transportation staff. Um, Chuck Lennett from Billings and Rounds, Doug Cogdahl from Technology, um, Large River, full of really, really bright people. And we decided that really there were nine buses that needed to be disposed of. And in the process, um, I had reached out to Trump Centers to see if they would entertain, I also reached out to Ohio Schools Council, if they would entertain the November bus bid purchase prices. So um what would cost us eight thousand dollars more in a couple of months? We were able to get four buses and send right now that are twenty twenty four buses um and save thirty two thousand dollars in the process. So um they're actually ready for delivery, will probably have delivery this week and pay approximately four hundred thousand dollars for four buses. Um, if we participate in the May bid, I believe the only thing that we might participate in is a special education bus with certain equipment on it. Um, but you won't see a a bus bid then again until next fall.
Okay.
Real quick, the reason we did that was when we reviewed the fleet and everything, realized we had five buses that we could eliminate. And then we replaced the four, we eliminated nine and brought four. When we looked at the fleet and realized what we had is, what we'll have is all of our route buses will be two thousand eighteen buses or newer. And all of the buses, including maybe except for one sub bus that we have, all have, I think, under a hundred thousand dollars. So when we realized how close we were to kind of capitalize the fleet and realized we can eliminate nine buses, which gives us more room in new transportation center, which again is gonna house our buses and protect them from weather and everything, we realized we can make that move now. Again, we we could not and then we maybe buy two buses in May at eight thousand more and buy two buses next year at sixteen thousand more. But again, every every time we do that, we're just. We're just gonna be spending more on it. So we decided make the move now and and um, yeah, I think so. And we we will not, except for that name the special education bus for wheelchair lift maybe in May. We should not need to buy buses for the two or three years. And then we will then get back on a real cycle of, you know, two buses come off, or maybe every year, three buses come off, and turn that cycle moving forward. Kind of we kind of we do with our our laptops, where we have a cycle going. And even if you turn them in earlier, well, you can sell them for money for value, right? So. With the buses.
So with that reduction, how many, what is our fleet size now?
So I think we will be down to about, let me think, um. I think we'll be around thirty four to thirty six buses.
So we had over forty buses?
Yes, over forty two, I believe.
Wow.
And um.
And that, well, that's why when we I met earlier with like mechanic and transportation earlier to, we were finalizing like how many bays would really be transportation centers. We had forty planned and that including space for the vans. Uh, was, is that gonna be enough? And then we realized it is enough if we make a move and eliminate some of these buses now, that we're just putting money into that we don't need to, because we don't need nine to ten, eleven, twelve spare buses that we're putting money into. We need them for, we need them for athletic events and so on, but we 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 have enough.
I I have a comment or I don't know.
I have a question.
Okay, so my thing is though is that I I'm making this number up, don't hold it by its number. We're gonna have thirty two bays for the buses. And that is exactly what we need right now, but are we thinking about like supplying road? Are we thinking about all the new homes are going on doing road? Are we taking that all into account that we might need more buses down the road? And then, because I would hate to build a brand new transportation facility and then having to have buses sit outside. That's just a comment.
Yeah, no, we, that is, that the number is in play. And I think I, we'll see once I'll send down, there might actually be roughly forty two buses. Again, we're.
Okay.
The G D's gone back to redesign it, so then the back west will take a look and every, we get, well, we get a second time.
Okay.
Because we don't want that happening. But we do know pretty much Amherst is, we don't have the rule like in A B on original where it could explode. But yeah, I agree, we wanna make sure that there's room to grow.
I mean, we have.
Every, every.
Well, those two areas are gonna grow. And then we still have, I don't know how many homes you can get over there, but Mr. Small's property, you know, we still have that whole big field there. We really don't have too much left. I mean, really, not in the school.
Right. One commercial.
You think?
I don't know.
Their weight is a big money.
Big money.
And so the transportation center, you know, Mike said perhaps around forty two spaces, twenty twenty side of the transportation center. Um, we also have vans that transport students. So um there are, you know, a number of bays where we'll have two two vans stacked up in each bay, right? So it's not just, and hopefully it's large enough for our van trailer and our maintenance vehicles and things like that.
Right.
So yes, plenty had, nothing would be worse than to build it too small, right?
Yeah, right.
You have one opportunity to get it.
And you say hopefully, is 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 that in play as far as figuring for the bus trailer, the van trailer and all that shit?
Yeah, that's already. Yes, and we've been with with transportation supervisor, Chuck, the mechanic, we met with all of them. Actually included the O C president, who's a bus driver in Oregon as well. So, yes, now if you go back, like plan back, it's okay, double check, triple check the base, sure, we move forward a certain number of, you know.
Now, I would I would rather, meet person, this is just totally my opinion. I would rather build a transportation facility that has two extra bays.
Right.
Just in case, even if we don't really need them right now. But I would rather do that than to have four years down the road and we got buses sitting outside and people are gonna be saying, what the heck did you guys do? You know? I hear you.
You have a question?
Oh, yeah, I have a question, so you're talking about the the cycles of buying buses, right? Is that, was that based on them being outside as well or just pure use?
Both, so with, we should, we should be, our buses should last longer, like one or two more years than normal. Because they'll be inside, which.
That's a guess being conservative.
Yes, it could, yes, it could be even more.
Right.
I mean, like our buses are outside all the time, it's twenty four seven, so.
Right.
And and again, you might be correct, Mark, because the moment that like, the moment that rust comes in certain parts of the bus, it's all like. It it could be in wonderful shape, the engine, it could look beautiful, but once the uh control kind of shuts it down, it's over, so.
They come every year, right?
All all the time, so.
Okay, I didn't know that came more than once.
So the new buses that we're getting this week, they won't be on the road immediately. There's a process that they need to be prepared for the road, new tires, for instance. They don't come with the tires, they need to.
What?
Okay, on the bus route. They don't, sorry.
Oh, okay.
But I mean, from the letter, from.
Yeah, wait, 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 wait.
What? This is.
So we give buses with tires, I'm assuming.
Yeah, right.
No, they come with no tires.
This is odd.
So we, do we have to split all these buses with new tires?
Mr. Wolf?
Nobody wants. I know exactly how to um answer this question, Mr. President. I nearly opened up a can of worms, like touched and heard. Um, the buses come with.
Racing tires, huh?
No, slicks, right, slicks. Um, no, they don't come with the tires that they need to be on the road transporting students with.
Think I'm gonna stay in tires at that part of it. Yeah, and that's not just Mark, it's any.
No, man, so so with our bid, we're paying for these tires, correct? The the the, when when we're when we're buying these new buses, they come with tires, like, right?
The tire. So do we go with that?
Okay, so it's the tires that we can't use, so we have to buy, we're getting eight buses, so we have to buy all new tires for these buses? What happens to those tires? Do we, do we get money for those, because they're not used? I I I.
We will get the answer and get back to you.
I don't know, I don't know what it is. For the brand new, unused tires.
Wait. You say there was a store shaving the tires?
Huh?
Not that kind of tires.
Oh, okay.
I I never knew that, I I didn't figure that.
I didn't either. Thanks, Julia. My point was maybe though, um, so we don't get the two lots, like the details, well, I apologize for bringing that up. I apologize for bringing that up. Um, but there is a process to ready the bus and it needs to pass some inspection, regardless they have it.
Gotcha.
Before it can go to a route bus, so.
So does it come with a brake?
That's next.
So so on these tires, though.
All of the braking mechanisms are included.
Getting into the tire. Do you want, and have to retool all these buses with tires? Or is that, does a firm come in, there's a lot of buses, do, does, does somebody come in and do this?
No, we don't. We switch it up. And there's, I mean, there's probably a couple of things in the bus too, like they might come with specific camera equipment that we have to switch out.
Okay.
But it automatically comes with it, but maybe because there are systems.
Doesn't go with our.
Right.
Now, these buses are, we're we're retooling them to communicate with the police department as well, right?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
That part makes sense.
Yeah.
It's a bigger, yeah. You can't reach that big since.
That was the other, that was the other reason we, I I wanna do it now, because we're in the process of finishing that, the equip, new equipment and. I've been talking about, so I'm like, let's get them all now, so that we can, you know, get it all done in one.
Yeah.
Shut.
I don't like. It was it was just, we just knew it, so it's not like you gotta do what you gotta do.
And by buying them this spring, um, the twenty twenty four model, again, we saved thirty two thousand dollars.
Enough of the twenty twenty. The tires.
Okay, at least it's breaking down.
I don't know right now, right?
See, we we smart enough.
Are we, are we down with this topic?
Yes.
Are we down with this topic? I don't think we need to move exactly a session now, right?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
To a judge? Yes.
Call me, Wolf, please.
Mrs. Gellis.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.